While we're waiting to work with the computers, let's stand and do our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wenicki, will you lead us, please?
We lead it to the way the United States of America, through the Republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, we have a moment of silence here. Rather than that tonight, I want us to reflect on what happened to this nation a week ago. We can't let that happen in this country. We cannot. We're better than that. We're better than that in the United States. We're better than that in Wisconsin. We're better than that on Jefferson County Board. And just for you guys to think about tonight for the, oh, I just want to read you this. "We are not enemies but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic forge of memory will dwell when again touched as surely will be by the better angels of our nature." That's from Abraham Lincoln's first inaugural address when he was facing divided country. We have to heal folk. And it starts here. Let's think about that tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you. Are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
We are, Mr. Chair.
We will proceed here. We don't have a roll call, but just out here, I know we have a forum. I've counted up. We have seventeen in the room, so we have a forum so we can proceed with business. And we'll work on the computer business as we go. So I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Who seconded? Since we can't get that up on the board and everything else, just make sure you say your name outside. So that was Matt Supervisor Falconer seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Approval of December eighth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Supervisor Renaud?
I'll move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second, Paulson.
Second from Paulson. Thank you. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. They are approved. Communications?
We have zoning committee notice of public hearing, which is January twenty first, twenty twenty one, beginning at seven PM, and that'll be right here in room two oh five. And then we also have some retirement recognitions.
Terry, lead us through that.
Good evening, everyone. We have four retirements over the last quarter with Jefferson County. Each one of them had over twenty years of experience. So again, as I come up every quarter, that we are losing a lot of the knowledge, the institutional knowledge that goes into Jefferson County. Two individuals who are not here tonight, I'd like to recognize first Suzanne Topo from the Sheriff's Office was a cook for over thirty-one years. She started in December, I'm sorry, July of nineteen eighty-nine. And Marshall Ritter from the Highway Department was with them for over, just a little bit over twenty-two years. And we do have two retirees here tonight that I'd like them just to step forward. We have a certificate and a plaque for them that I'd like to give them. And if they have any words that they would like to say to county board upon their retirement, I'd like to give them a couple of minutes to do so. First is Gino Racinelli. Not even going to try to say his first name because nobody would recognize him if we would call him you, Gino. Come on up, Gino. Gino worked in our Human Services Department. His final position there was the Financial Assistant Worker. I actually got to meet him, not meet him for the first time, but spend some time with him over in his office just this last year, I think it was, and to see the environment which he works in and some of the issues that he has had to personally deal with, with some of our consumers and the great work that he did for them. So we'd like to recognize Gino for his twenty-eight years and eleven months of service. His dedication and service and commitment are definitely achievements that he should be proud of and the county should be proud of.
Just want to take and express a little bit of gratitude. Back in January of ninety-two, I believe it was, I was a young guy without a gray hair on my head. And I started working for Jefferson County. I think I was hired as an aftercare worker, and I was paid the amazing sum of seven dollars and four cents an hour at the time. And the last twenty-nine years have gone by pretty quick. But it's really been a privilege for me to serve the residents of Jefferson County. They have opened up their homes, and they've allowed me on their journey. And I've worked with some tremendous professionals along the way. So again, it's really been a privilege for me, and it's with a great deal of gratitude and appreciation that I thank the citizens of Jefferson County for allowing me to serve them. Thank you.
Then I'd like to call Pat Heffron forward, please. Pat worked in our Parks Department when he retired just recently as a Parks Building and Grounds Worker with almost thirty years of experience, over twenty-nine and a half years of experience. And again, I think the same goes with his dedication and commitment that he made to the Parks Department. We know how that has grown over the years and just the passion that I know Pat put into it, and I have a feeling he still will even upon retirement. And I think one thing I'd like to say about these two individuals that are before us tonight, I have had to deal with a lot of issues throughout the county, but I don't know two more people who I've never seen get angry or upset. Either one of these two. They've always had a smile on their face, no matter what the circumstances are. But Pat, we'd like to recognize you again for those twenty-nine years of service.
I'd just like to say, when I started in ninety-one, there wasn't a full-time employee in the parks except for, don't name it. And we reported to him and tell him what we were going to do. In a way, the parks have grown in the last, well, since ninety-one, when the parks were only open six months out of the year. I'd just like to thank all the people in the county board that gives us the amount of money we need to keep them. And all the employees that I worked with and met, and I, like she said, I haven't had issues with anybody over twenty-nine years. And everybody that's come and gone, I'd just like to thank everybody and hope the parks keep growing the way they have, and we can keep them the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. That takes us to Special Order of Business. Update on the Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation Plan.
So good evening. So we had laid out the plan, and we talked the last couple of months. The intention tonight was you'd be having a couple of resolutions in front of the county board tonight to talk about approving the Comprehensive Plan and the Farmland Preservation Plan. As many of you are aware, our joint committee of the Executive Committee and the Planning and Zoning Committee recently met, and they had some great conversations related to where we're heading with these two plans, with some ideas and some textual changes to the plan that we want to go through. One of the biggest comments that we're still working through right now is actually the vision statement within the Comprehensive Plan. That took a lot of debate last time, and we're working some wordsmithing right now to bring back to the Joint Committee going forward. And so what we wanted to do is kind of talk through where we're at. For those in the boardroom, there are three pieces of paper, and to the board online, we sent those out earlier today. So one is a presentation, then two others are called tractors. One says the Comprehensive Plan Tractor, and one's related to Farmland Preservation. So there should be two different tractors. So we'll kind of talk through what those are and kind of give an update overall. So again, our goal for where we're at is trying to get two plans together. And this was a pretty significant undertaking, but this was a planned event. I think as the board knows, as we have multiple plans, and one of our bigger intentions was the idea that our plans kind of talk and work together as a whole. We use that term ecosystems quite a bit. And our ecosystem comprises a lot of different functions that the Comprehensive Plan and the Farmland Preservation Plan take into effect. And so we want to make sure as we work through these together that these were complementary and work together and not necessarily a silo planning documents. And so a quick snapshot as a reminder of where at, this is, has been a long endeavor. We started this in two thousand nineteen, when we started looking at some of the basic goals, and a lot of it just give the understanding of existing conditions. So it was a lot of data grabs, looking at plans that were in place, et cetera. And then we started moving to issues and opportunities. And that was really some of those initial survey work, some of the meetings that took place, focus groups, et cetera, trying to really draw things out in various sectors. And then we started moving into the goal and policy development. That brings me to twenty nineteen. And then we got into twenty twenty. And then as part of that process, we began really focusing on those inputs that we got in twenty nineteen, and how do we develop that plan, and where does it need ahead? And that became the plan analysis and plan development, and then ultimately, we're here for plan adoption. So how did we get here? One thing we want to highlight is we went through this, and we had some conversations among staff and talking with the various committees, including the Steering Committee, who kind of oversaw this, was just a refresher of the effort. We tried to make sure this was an inclusive process to get data and input in. As you recall, the Comprehensive Plan is truly that. It is comprehensive. It impacts almost every functionality of part of the county that takes place. And so there's a lot of stakeholder groups that we want to bring in. And so we use various notification means. We used our website. We had an ongoing project website with updated documents going forward. We jumped into social media and tried to cross post things. And then we started going into pain lines even to try to make sure we had good broadcasts of the information out to those in the communities. Various press releases took place. We had a direct mailing to encourage participation. Almost twenty-six thousand postcards got sent out. And then even throughout the various places, we had QR posters and some season, we had those out, things like that. Again, trying to draw folks to look at the plan and get their input. We had numerous events. When this kicked off, we actually happened to have a Youth Government Day going on, not this last year, that was canceled, but the year before. But the goal ultimately is when we look at this, as I've said before, this is the ten to twenty-year plan. So those juniors in high school are going to be our twenty-eight to thirty-year-olds when we have this plan implemented. And so that's important to make sure they're part of that process of what this looks like. Numerous staff meetings, department head meetings, we had seven focus groups, some consultant, some remnant staff, we had various public preservation meetings, seven meetings, steering committee meetings, et cetera. When we add it all up, we had close to eighteen hundred participants in this process. The other thing I want to also focus is every single community, town, municipality, village, had a one-on-one session with our consultants, too. And so those are some great sessions, good feedback. So point being is we have some very good ways to get input. As we kind of talked through the process the last few months, we had key themes that were each chapter. So these are just to show us some highlights of what these were, especially since land use, housing, transportation were some of the more significant chapters specifically in the comp plan, but you saw similar things in the Farmland Preservation Plan as well. So you'll see this throughout in Chapter Two specifically is where you'll see these for the draft. So one of the requests that we had during this process recently was kind of to point out what changed from the last plan, and in some cases, what was a point of emphasis. So this was, in some ways, a complete rewrite of the plan. But with that being said, there's a lot of ongoing continuous values that were still in place from existing plans. In some ways, it was a matter of how it was wordsmithed. Some ways, it was bringing more complementary. Some ways is looking, how do we fully move these things forward to implement going ahead? And some were new opportunities that were brought forward that were under the surface before. And so part of this was, number one, I talked through it already, really the focus of the interrelationship between the comp plan and the Farmland Preservation Agricultural Plan. Now, those were the only two documents. I know everyone has been doing their homework, reading the documents, and within those documents, you're going to see several other plans that are cited. So example, is the county board just approved the outdoor recreation plan? That is cited as a document to look at. The Land and Water Committee is going through a process right now to update their land and water management plan. Some of those draft documents and statements are also included in this plan. And then some of those shared service studies, we just finished with the Wisconsin Policy Forum as an example, are also included here. Again, the intent is that these planning cycles were done with other inputs through other planning efforts, and those aren't done in silos, but done in a comprehensive approach. Number two, so I'm going to go back to the story when the staff kicked this off. And SRF went through that little chart, that circle many of you are familiar with now, with all the various chapters on that. And we had a senior staff member go, those are all supposed to be in the Comprehensive Plan. It was said in jest in some ways, but the point being is the intent was truly make a Comprehensive Plan, that there was a value across the board of all those key components of what makes up a Comprehensive Plan. So agricultural, natural resources, outdoor recreation, economic development, transportation, et cetera, are equal as we try to build this across a platform, not as silos, but opportunities to work together. So again, talking about that ecosystem, what we're trying to create in the county, continue. We talked about public participation, and the intent was trying to get as much in as we could. Obviously, twenty twenty was a little bit of a challenge of how do you get some of that public input going forward, but we found ways to do that. Implementation, we spent a lot of time, and what do we save for implementation? In some cases, how we align it in the future for budget and the strategic plan? And so these plans were created with the idea of not being a plan that looks pretty and meets a statutory requirement, but working together, we can move these things forward in terms of key goals that the county had brought forward for the various stakeholders and residents to take place. Rural character aesthetics, small town charm, those kind of things are a recurring theme and value, and that was very important, both documents, as we look ahead together. The concept of cornate growth. Again, we're looking at that balance of those areas that should be preserved, but then also areas that need a natural area of potential growth, especially with our location between the two metro areas, and also the pressure from the south coming. And so part of this is how do we be proactive with that growth? How do we have our towns and incorporated municipalities work together? And how do we find the right place with services that are available, that we can take those opportunities, but also we prepare for those challenges that growth might bring? Collaboration and cooperation. This morning, I was on a meeting, and we were talking about looking at twenty twenty, what is the year for twenty twenty-one, and mine was recovery and rebuilding. And part of it was the idea of we've built a lot of great things this year as we look at collaboration, cooperation. But that's not new, right? Twenty twenty did not need a pandemic to say that we work together because of foundation of those folks working together. It's been there for a long time. We just continue to build on it. And in this planning process and those interviews, that was a reoccurring theme, collaboration and cooperation. Equity and fairness, that was a comment that came out in terms of land, and how do we keep that fair across the board, and we have different values from different parts of the county and the resources related to it. And then finally, some other key things, like the continued idea of environmental protections, really focus on some of our natural resource corridors, look into those wetlands, how do we make sure we're mapping these things properly, to focus the groundwater, surface water quality specifically. And again, the third bullet kind of is a recurring theme, make sure our growth and developments in places that make sense, and will keep and preserve the areas that it does not make sense to keep the growth out. Housing and development, kind of consistent, you know, be cognizant of keeping the rural character and the adverse impacts, but understand there's some growth and opportunities we laid into that. We want to encourage those higher density areas in our urban service areas along the municipalities and those transportation corridors. So first, the second and third bullet kind of talks together, include businesses and industry. And the key is, we want to make sure we have those higher intensity developments, or where we have sewer and water, we have the power in place, we have those more intensive city services as an example. We also want to make sure that we have, we link into our current transportation network and maximize the benefit versus building new transportation networks that might not be needed. So example, how do we use twenty-six, and I ninety-four, and sixteen going ahead in the future? And then finally, agricultural preservation, again, trying to minimize and non-agricultural development on those prompt soils. We talked a lot about this in the process, having classification of what those soils look like, and relooking at it for the future. Integrity of agricultural districts in those accepted agricultural practices. So those were some of the key themes. Some are new or changed from the last plan, and some are just more points of emphasis on building principles that were in place already. So we're really in the process of incorporating the comments. And so the sheets you have in front of you are our trackers. And what our consultant did, we had clearinghouse, basically, they were our clearinghouse, and they took literally the comments as they were presented, and that's your first column. So we have approximately one hundred thirty-one Comprehensive Plan comments. Now, this doesn't mean there's significant policy changes. In some cases, there's wordsmithing or repositioning certain paragraphs, et cetera. The second column says update. So if a yes is in there, that means that's going to be included in the updated document that's going to be released tomorrow morning, incorporating those comments. We put this here so the policymaking, the board and committees can also give feedback. Do they want that comment to be included? So if for some reason you don't want that included, then in our next joint meeting, we'll talk through shortly, we can get that feedback. In some cases, you'll see no. So some cases, there's comments that came in that maybe didn't align with some of the things that we heard, or maybe with some specific policy that we didn't have the guidance on, that we thought there was some conversations of in future meetings. And so again, this is a document to help guide the board through reading through those comments, and then determine what should be included in those final documentations. So there's one hundred thirty-one for the comp plan, and about fifty-six for the egg preservation plan. So that's kind of where our public comment is. And like I said, the biggest one that's still outstanding or working through is the vision statement. So stay tuned. So what's our next steps? So on January twenty-fifth, following the normally scheduled planning zoning meeting at eight-thirty, so probably around nine thirty-ish, we're assuming, will be the next joint meeting to look at the final comments that have come in and make a final recommendation from those committees back to the county board of whether to accept these plans as proposed with those updates. We also, beyond the approval, want to start looking ahead. And again, these are the key factors as we look to the future. So part of this is, we want to utilize a strategic plan to help break down the implementation strategy. And so this is going to be, in past practice, is typically done through the Executive Committee, but we would like to have those conversations with some staff input going ahead. And then the implementation plan that has grown slightly since we talked about that in budget season, I think it was like thirty-two pages in, I think we're a little bit bigger than that now with some new ideas that have surfaced or just specific things. On an example, two examples, when we start talking about education, we didn't fully have the idea of really working with our higher education. So we want to make sure there was a specific proactive approach to saying, we want to work, continue our efforts working with U of A Whitewater, Madison College, Waukesha County Technical College, and Marinatha. Those are some great resources. They've helped us out a lot already, but there's some great opportunities ahead. You might have heard that we need childcare in the county and across the state. So we have some programs that are in place, and that came up routinely through these conversations, but we want to make sure there was a strategic initiative saying, we want to continue to look at how do we incorporate childcare related to our ecosystem system of Jefferson County, not only help our businesses, but also as one of the top ten employers in the county, our staff needs the access to childcare, too, as we continue to recruit and try to retain the best personnel. So our goal is then, how do we break that down, looking at as it relates to staffing requirements, looking at maybe relates to project requirements, and put it into chunks of two- to three-year cycles that make sense? The other part is really have to prioritize it. So some of this might be, we want to jump to E, but realize E through D also need to be done in implementation first before we can get to E. And so that's how we're going to try to lay this out in future meetings with the county board. And so the key dates ahead will be January twenty-fifth, and then February eighth, our next county board meeting is the goal for the final approval. Just another quick update, the Farmland Preservation Plan has been basically blessed off on by DAT cap. There's some final things that we're working with them, but we will have an official signature as part of the approval process going into the February meeting. So that's important because it meets the statute requirements of DAT cap. The other thing is as significant because that starts rolling the time on when we start. So it's ten years, right? I think the next cycle. So once that signature's done there, that's when our ten-year cycle starts from when we have to update it again. So some significant process on all fronts. So I'm open to any questions or comments, but we want a quick update. So again, I want to reinforce, take a look at those trackers. If you have questions, please reach out to myself, Matt Zingle, our zoning director, or Paul, our consultant. For those who've had that opportunity, Paul and his staff at SRF have been very open. I don't know how many phone calls they have received, emails they have received from board members, staff, the public, and they've been awesome in terms of making sure we're incorporating ideas and thoughts and bringing those forward so we have the complete picture. So, Mr. Chair, that is all I have for this part of the presentation, pending any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Weymeyer. I said, thank you very much, Mr. Weymeyer. Okay, which takes us to, at this point, I'm just taking a quick, why are we doing getting everybody online here? It's not happening? Okay, good enough. All right, we'll move on to Executive Committee. Amy Renaud. Supervisor Renaud. Oh, excuse me, public comment first. Do you have anybody here for public comment? No one signed up for public comment. My mistake. Which then takes us to item ten, Executive Committee Supervisor Renaud, resolution. She's muted, it looks like.
Okay, you can hear me now, right?
Yes.
I would like to yield the floor to Supervisor Christensen, who is Jefferson County's representative to the Wisconsin Utility Tax Association. And he is the one who brought this issue before the executive.
Director Christensen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I have here is Resolution number twenty twenty thirty-nine. State utility aid is intended to compensate local governments for costs they incur in providing services to local utilities, which cannot be recouped through property tax, since utilities are exempt from property taxation. Jefferson County is a member of the Wisconsin County's Utility Tax Association, which is comprised of thirty-six counties with electric utility plants. Local governments hosting utility plants are entitled to a portion of utility taxes collected by the state sponsor. The current formula for determining and payment is fifty years old and no longer provides equitable return of utility tax collection to counties and municipalities. The state of Wisconsin has returned approximately twenty percent of the revenue collected to local governments hosting utilities. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the state collected three hundred and fifty-one point four million dollars in utility taxes, but only returned seventy-five point six million dollars to local governments as utility aid. This resolution is requesting that Governor Evers and the Wisconsin Legislature include an inflation-based adjustment to the state's utility tax aid formula in the next budget bill to create an improved, more equitable return of utility tax collections to counties and municipalities as utility aid. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors hereby request Governor Tony Evers and the Wisconsin Legislature to include an inflation-based adjustment to the state's utility tax aid formula in the next budget bill to create and improve more equitable return of utility tax collections to counties and municipalities as utility aid. Be it further resolved that Governor Tony Evers and the Wisconsin Legislature include in the next state budget a catch-up provision compensating counties and municipalities using a thirteen-year inflationary index, starting in two thousand and five, going to two thousand and eighteen, which would have generated twenty-two point five million more in utility aid payments, and further include indexing formula components from twenty eighteen onward, which would cost less than two million dollars per year to ensure that payments reflect the increased value of utility property. The next two clauses are housekeeping, and the fiscal note is, this resolution has no immediate fiscal impact. I move for adoption of this resolution.
Who have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Johns. Discussion. Discussion. I have noticed that a number of other counties around the state have passed resolutions, this resolution. And as you well know, this has a considerable amount of effect on us, and it will have more as we put in some our solar issues here. So, any questions? How do you want to vote? Madam Clerk.
We can do a, we can try it with the tablet.
We can do a, we can try it with the tablet.
Supervisor Christensen, you head. Okay. Seeing none, we can try the tablet. I can't do anything. Mine doesn't apparently connect. Okay, I've been advised by the clerk that we would let need to do a voice vote here. All right, all favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? Passed. Okay, takes us to finance committee. Supervisor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2020 40. Authorizing closeout of Jefferson County Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund Program. The Community Development Block Grant Program is a federal program administered by the Wisconsin Department Administration. Under this program, Jefferson County was awarded funds used to establish a revolving loan fund designed to make loans to small businesses with the goal of creating jobs and promoting economic development in Jefferson County. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has terminated this program, and the Wisconsin Department Administration has implemented a mandatory closeout program, which will close all revolving loan funds that were financed through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Jefferson County will continue to administer a revolving loan fund using other funding sources for the purpose of creating jobs and promoting economic development. Authorizing the CDBG close program will make Jefferson County eligible to apply for a Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund Closeout Grant Award to allocate funds for up to three projects within the county that meet the requirements of a national objective as defined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Wisconsin Department of Administration. This resolution authorizes Jefferson County to participate in the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Close Program and close all Community Development Block Grants funded revolving loan funds administered by the Jefferson County, and further authorizes the county board chair and county administrator to apply for a revolving loan fund closeout grant award. The Finance Committee considers this resolution as meeting on January 7th, 2021, and recommended forwarding to the county board for approval. The three winners, the three communities that got awards awarded to them are listed on the back of the next page there. And it'd be the city down towards the bottom two thirds, the city of Jefferson, the village of Palmyra, and the city of Fort Atkinson. And you can read what they applied for and what the money would be going for. Fiscal note, the amount due to the DOA DEHCR of $763,935.80 consists of $423,188.72 in cash restricted for the CDBG revolving loan fund program, and one outstanding loan in the amount of $340,747.80. Jefferson County was given the option to either purchase the loan or continue service on behalf of the department administration. In either case, Jefferson County would retain any risk of loss for the outstanding loan. By purchasing the loan, Jefferson County is entitled to the interest generated from the loan. During a September 10th, 2020 meeting, the Finance Committee voted to purchase the loan as part of this payment. This payment is funded from the fund balance restricted for the CDBG revolving loan fund program, and it as such has no budgetary impact. Therefore, no budget adjustment is required. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Second.
Second was by?
Renard.
Supervisor Renard with the second. Questions? Discussion? I've been advised by a different council, we need a roll call vote on this. So if there's no questions and discussion, we will follow a roll, please.
Supervisor David?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Kelly? Supervisor Renard?
Aye.
Supervisor Smith?
Aye.
Supervisor Martin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lund?
Aye.
Supervisor Koots?
Aye.
Supervisor White? Supervisor Roberts?
Aye.
It's not on. Did Supervisor Payne?
Supervisor Payne?
Aye.
Supervisor Jones? Supervisor Brockler?
Aye.
Supervisor Herbst? Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Winnicky? Supervisor Zastro? Supervisor Johns?
Aye.
Supervisor Nass?
Aye.
Supervisor Drina?
Aye.
Supervisor Backland? Supervisor Knard? Supervisor Paulson? Supervisor Felker? Supervisor Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Supervisor Nealon? Supervisor Schultz? And Supervisor Christensen? Okay, we have 27 yes and three absent.
It passes. Which takes it to the Finance Committee B Resolution, Supervisor Jones.
Resolution number 202041. Accepting grant funds from the Wisconsin Department of Justice for Juvenile Delinquency Prevention and Improvements to Juvenile Justice Programs and Practices. The Wisconsin Department of Justice has awarded Jefferson County $7,000 pursuant to the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act to be applied towards Jefferson County diversionary program to address disproportionate minority contact. The Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Act works to prevent juvenile delinquency, improve the juvenile justice system, and protect children. This program accomplishes its mission by providing funds directly to state and local communities for delinquency prevention improvements to state and local juvenile justice programs and practices. These grant funds will allow the Human Service Department to create programs aimed at reducing the overrepresentation of minority youth in Jefferson County's juvenile justice system through diversionary programming. On January 7th, 2021, the Finance Committee reviewed this resolution and recommended forwarding to the county board to accept $7,000 in grant funding for juvenile delinquency prevention and improvements to juvenile justice programs and practices. Fiscal note, these grant funds will be used for diversionary program to address disproportionate minority contact and are available to be used January 1, 2021, to September 30th, 2021. Jefferson County will receive reimbursement for costing incurred during this time. This is a budget amendment. County board approval requires a two-third vote in the entire membership of the county board. 20 votes of 30 member county board. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Morris. Discussion. Questions? Seeing none, again, this takes a roll call vote. We need a two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk.
I don't have the right screen.
Turn on the screen.
Yeah, that's what mine says too. That's what mine says. Waiting to roll call, call.
Supervisor Jones?
Aye.
Supervisor Kelly?
Aye.
Supervisor David? Supervisor David, you're muted. Supervisor Brockler? Supervisor Herbst?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Winnicky? Supervisor Renard?
Aye.
Supervisor Zastro? Supervisor Johns?
Aye.
Supervisor Smith?
Aye.
Supervisor Martin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lund?
Aye.
Supervisor Nass?
Aye.
Supervisor Payne? Supervisor Koots?
Aye.
Supervisor White? Supervisor Drina?
Aye.
Supervisor Backland? Supervisor Knard?
Aye.
Supervisor Paulson? Supervisor Felker?
Aye.
Supervisor Fitzgerald? Supervisor Nealon? Supervisor Schultz? Supervisor Roberts?
Aye.
And Supervisor Christensen?
Aye.
26 yes for absent.
And it passes. Thank you. Human Resources Committee, Supervisor Brogdon. Item 12.
It is just a report from the last committee to give you an update of what's happening with elements listed on the paper.
I believe that was, if you walked in the room, that was this sheet. Thank you Supervisor Brogdon, there's no action required on this item. Do you have any questions? Anything? Because Ms. Palm shares well. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Planning and Zoning Committee. Supervisor Paulson, Supervisor Jacob is excused tonight due to illness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The honorable members of the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, the Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee, having considered petitions to amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County filed for public hearing held on December 17th, 2020 as required by law pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, notice thereof have been given and being duly advised of the wishes of the town boards and persons in the area affected, hereby makes the following recommendations. Approval of positions as written dated this 21st day of December, 2020, Blaine Paulson, Secretary.
Ordinance number?
15.
Ordinance number 15, amending official zoning map of Jefferson County. Whereas the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors has adhered too far, been petitioned to amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County, and as as written, I would entertain a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Supervisor Nealon, this is second to approve as as written. Any discussion, questions? Supervisor Knard?
I will abstain from the potential conflicts.
Still noted. Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor of ordinance number 15, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance passes. Takes us to item C, repealing and recreating the private onsite wastewater treatment system ordinance, page 13 in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance number 202016, repealing and recreating the private onsite waste manage wastewater treatment system ordinance. The Jefferson County private sewage system ordinance was adopted on May 8th, 2001. Since its adoption, numerous changes have been made to Wisconsin state statutes and administrative code section referred in the ordinance. This ordinance repeals and recreates the private sewage system ordinance and brings the ordinance into compliance with current Wisconsin law. The Planning and Zoning Committee considered this ordinance amendment on December 28th, 2020, and recommended forwarding to the county board supervisors for adoption. I recommend forwarding this for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Felker. Any questions? Discussions?
This is Supervisor David.
Yes.
You outlined changes.
Matt? Do you want to outline basically what this entails? We'll have our planning and zoning director, Matt Zingle, give us some brief detail here.
Well, the short of it is, the outlining the entire ordinance is redoing the entire ordinance. It was very outdated. Most of the ordinance changes, as it's going through as a repeal and recreate, are due to the fact that we're just changing the ordinance references. Back in the day, the state code was under CAM, so CAM 383, 384. Nowadays is now under SPS 382, 384. So there's a lot of those technical references that we're now updating. Other than that, there are no major changes. We're bringing the ordinance into compliance with how the departments operated over the last 20 years and just updating the ordinance to reflect nowadays state statutes and administrative code references. Is that a quick? Supervisor David? Did I then hear Matt say that there's really no major changes? It's just a matter of terminology and updating it to match the state new regulations? Correct, correct. I think that one change I can think of off the top of my head refers to the use of composting toilets. The ordinance does not allow for composting toilets. However, someone would request the use, it would go to the Planning and Zoning Committee for their review and consideration. That's one of the the major changes. That's not something we see every day, and that's just stemming from a past incident. There's also Thank you. The other section that we added that you could consider new would be working or when someone proposes a septic system on a adjoining property. So they're proposing a septic system over easement. Currently, the ordinance will not allow that. The septic system needs to be placed on the person's property that is intended to serve. However, if they do propose it to propose it by an easement, so having that septic on a different property, that'll follow that same procedure and go to the Planning and Zoning Committee for their review and consideration. Thanks, Matt.
Any other questions? Do we have Matt at the mic?
We have Anita online.
Okay. Supervisor Martin?
Is this the right time to address a question or a recommendation for a potential change on this?
We'll see. Go ahead.
Okay, this is an important ordinance for public health and safety. And it's great to see it. I know a lot of work went into it, so thank you to everyone who worked on this. Failed septic systems can be the cause or a contributing factor to criptosporidiosis, which is a bacterial infection. And it can be very serious and for people that have immune systems that are compromised, it actually can be fatal. So this is important. We may want to tweak this just a little into spots. In particular, section 12.09 under limitations. Section 9 talks about exceptions to allowing holding tanks. And I was wondering if we might want to look at the following. It's maybe changing and saying, exceptions to allowing holding tanks for new construction may be granted when the public interest in safe, healthful sanitation arrangements will not be jeopardized. And then could we add the word, as determined by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors? And then the other change that I think we could perhaps look at is under 12.18, which is the POWTS main maintenance and management section under number one, general provisions. Part maybe I believe has three different listings as to what the investigation of potentially failed system would involve. And there are three things listed. I would suggest that we consider adding number four, requiring water testing by a certified laboratory. And these changes would be the same types of things that are incorporated in the Dane County ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Dangle, have any? Anything you want to add to the question?
As for the first subject, and I have concerns, and I'll point to the county administrator and corporation counsel of according the of involving the Department of Health in the ordinance. Currently, there is no take or collaboration right now between the zoning department and the Department of Health. I don't feel that linkage in that location would be necessary. I don't feel that linkage in that location would be necessary. I'd have to review the second part more about determining if a system has failed due to a water testing and how that implementation would occur. Do you have any explanation on that, Supervisor Martin, or what you're aiming at?
Well, it's just that they say, you know, they've got the listings of what, what may be done, which may include but is not limited to requiring an inspection by a licensed plumber, requiring a soil boring, performing on-site inspection, and then was suggesting requiring water testing is to make sure that everything is okay and that drinking water isn't contaminated. You know, one of the things that's important, and I understand that in the past this hasn't been linked, but you know, each time that the Board of Health meets, they do review the disease statistics, and criptosporidiosis is one which is required to be reported to the CDC. We have had each year for the last couple of years, a number of cases. Failed septic systems can be one factor, so can there be infection within a family when people swim at pools that are, you know, contaminated or in a water park situation or whatever. There also can be contamination from animal manure that is run off into drinking water. So I do think that these things would make sense to be looked at for the public health aspect of them.
Sure, so my first comment on that is that section we reference is like a, let's say a quick reference for the department to determine if that septic system's failed, and it's an easy means for the landowner to prove that it's not failed. My concern is there's no linkage to water testing in state statute or administrative code. If a septic system has failed, it's going to be difficult to link that to groundwater or well water testing in that area. There are a lot of other factors that could lead into the poor water quality for that And then just to clarify, in that instance, how that section would be utilized is by the department or one of my staff requiring a landowner to do a water test on their property, and then we would be notifying them that their septic system failed.
Any other discussion, questions? Supervisor Knard.
Yeah, I'm just reading this under that 12.18, here indeed, it does say that the county may investigate any report of a failed system in which potential requirements may include but are not limited to the three that are listed. So if there was a need to have further testing, I think the county would be well within the ordinance to step outside of Items 1, 2, and 3 and add whatever they felt was necessary.
Other questions, comments, discussion? Yeah, we have an ordinance on the floor. We will, let's, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Takes us to Item 14, public comment of a general nature. Anybody here for a public comment of a general nature?
Go pack.
Go pack, yeah, okay, that sounds good. Announcements? Any announcements? Back to games on Saturday, yeah, okay. Mr. Waymire.
So, to follow through our last meeting, we are beginning the process of reviewing the joint development agreements, and one specifically we're preparing for is the Wisconsin, the We Energies project up in Exonia. And so what we're, we have set from a process standpoint is on January 21, next Thursday, starting at 1 o'clock, will be a special executive committee meeting up in this room. The sole purpose of that meeting is to receive comment related to the proposed development agreement, and we will begin an updated out that was approved by the town of Exonia last night for purposes of guidance, any discussions of updating that document. So again, the goal is on January 21, is to have an open comment period related to that. We are requesting, if possible, have comments also provided in writing so we can look at specific areas of that development agreement, and those can be provided to myself, the Corporation Council, and the executive committees, is what we're asking. Our intent is based on a number of comments is probably to develop a tracker to help provide any comments and updates similar to what we had done for the comp plan and the farm and preservation plan. So just for those who are interested or providing comments, please announce on the horizon as well, and then at the regular meeting, which would be January 27, of the executive committee, then we'll have more guidance and discussion related to the proposed development agreement itself. And so if you're interested or have questions, please let us know so we can continue our process related to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Waymire. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Our next county board meeting, February 9, 7 p.m. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Similar by Paulson the second, by Supervisor Felker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.